Is in your hands, yet you claim to know none of this? As, as a student, we are taught to constantly check our work. Teachers are instructed to tell us to check our work. But you, the people we've, we look up to, forgot to check your work. And now we are responsible for your mistake? These teachers have dedicated their lives to this district. And as teachers, they have made many sacrifices. However, I don't see any of you taking any budget cuts. And are any of you losing your job? You had no problem firing teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. You tell us every penny counts, but where are your pennies? I ask you, as a student attending your district, to think about that tonight. Thank you.
Next time Adelaide West.
Hello, my name is Adelaide West. I am eight years old and I am a third grader at Wildwood Elementary School. I just found out that one of my principals is being moved to a different school, which is very upsetting because he has made our school safer and a better place. I used to be afraid to go to school because of a kid who had such bad behavior. Last year, we had a kid who threw scissors across the room, threw furniture, tore our class library apart, jumped on our, jumped on desks and screamed in my face, emptied water bottles and banged them off of desks. It was scary and I was afraid to go to school. Mr. Furka, my teacher and my teacher, Ms. Walton, have changed that. I love to go to school now, now because people mostly follow the rules. I understand that you need a principal at the other school, but we need Mr. Furka to stay at Wildwood. Also, I want to talk to you about music. You know, you may not know this, but I am the youngest member in history of John Glenn High School marching band. I marched as the green mini car in the show last year. I was one of the, I was, it was one of the best things that happened to me. I hope to continue to be part of the band again in any way that I can. Band is my happy place. So when I heard that there's plans to combine classes and possibly get rid of middle school music classes, I got really upset. Why are you taking away my opportunity to learn music? When, what happens when I want to take choir or band or orchestra? And it's no longer available? Well, what else are you planning to cut? I work really hard to get good grades and be a leader. It's your job to make my school better so that I can learn and be the best person I can be. Please do your job.
Echo Post.
It's disheartening that Dr. Dignan couldn't be here for this too. Uh, my name is Echo Post. I have two children currently in the district, a freshman at Wayne and a seventh grader at Adams. I also have a son that graduated from Wayne in 2022. I have addressed you before. We're a musical family, my husband and I, and my best friend and I met at band camp thirty years ago this summer. Lifelong friendships can be made in music classes, whether it be choir, band, or orchestra. Leaders are developed. Life skills, patience, creativity, problem solving, and work ethic are all learned for lifelong success. So now there are these fairly substantiated rumors regarding dismantling choir for Wayne, forcing the music teachers at Adams and Franklin to add choir to their days. Mr. Green taught all of these classes, as well as being a support system for these students. He started growing these programs in three schools. And now you have decided he isn't important. So he can just go to two elementary schools instead? Doesn't make sense. Sounds more like forcing him out of the district. Not a solution. Also, shipping the kids from Wayne to Glenn for choir? Again, not a solution. It disrupts their day for no really good reason. Kids will quit because you've made them feel unimportant and took away their teacher. You have done that. In reference to that, combining all strings at the middle schools is very unfair to new instrumental students, as well as the students who now have been playing for two years and have far surpassed a beginner music student. How is anyone supposed to get the best instruction and growth? Eighth graders and sixth graders are very different socially and emotionally. Anybody that has children knows this. This is what you're combining. Kids fresh from elementary school and kids who a few months away from going to high school. Do you realize that reading music is the same as learning a foreign language? And then adding non-music classes to the Adams teacher's schedule? So hire a coding teacher for crying out loud instead of giving him triple duty? That's taken away from my daughter by doing that for him. So we'll lose numbers that we've worked so hard to grow. These programs have seen many ups and downs in the last five years and are finally on the upside. Why does it need to be another disruption? My daughter is starting her third year at cello this fall. She should not have to spend her class time waiting for a sixth grader to learn music. Just how to read it. Have any of you been and listened to the middle schools? The high schools? The plays? The choir concerts? Because the only person I have seen is Ms. Mitchell. Just to let you all know. Now onto something that affects not only music kids, but those looking for higher education. I did not buy my house within the borders of John Glenn High School, as I'm sure other parents didn't buy theirs within Wayne memorials. So what makes you think any of us want to ship them between schools? I didn't live there for my son to go to Glenn, and he certainly doesn't want to do that. That's his choice. So shipping them for AP classes disrupts their day, their learning, their other classes, which rumor has it would be those electives, band, art, orchestra. Also, you can save a dollar, eliminate more good teachers, lose more students. There are kids, including my own, that will not take these well-deserved higher education classes because they don't want to spend time in a bus in the middle of the day.
That's time.
I'm not done.
Okay.
I put you guys on that board.
Okay, but that is time.
Okay, great.
If we're enforcing with everybody else, that's not how this works. If there's a group of people, we choose one person. It's not fair to other people. We've cut off to allow you to continue.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we have another.
Then I'm going to take Casey Farmer's time because she's not here and I brought that.
That is also not allowed.
And it specifically says on there that I was here to speak for her.
Okay, but just because you wrote that doesn't mean there are people in this room that wish to speak and we are now down to ten minutes left, so.
You're absolutely right.
We appreciate your, we appreciate your comments, but we have other.
You guys caused this. You guys caused us to be here this late. You guys decided to close.
Ma'am, 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 I will stop this meeting and we will call to have you removed. There are other people that are wait, have waited their turn.
Okay, I'll make sure you get removed too.
Okay. Barbara Bobea.
I just want to take a moment and tell my little voice friend down there that I really respected her tonight. That, that was a lot to say. There are so many adults who stand up here and they don't have the courage that she had tonight. And I really respect that. This school year, we had a fantastic principal and vice principal combination at Wildwood. Ms. Babiac and Mr. Furka. The climate and culture have improved dramatically. Not only does the PPS data support the improvement, but everyone in the school can see and feel it. Wildwood still has a large number of elementary students compared to other schools in our district. Therefore, due to that enrollment, we need two administrators on a daily basis. There are situations with students, staff, parents, community, Board of Education that require their attention. Too much for one person to handle effectively. Not just any two people will be successful. You need two people that the staff, parents, and students respect. These two people must be able to support each other, work well together, and have a common goal. That's exactly what we had at Wildwood, and it worked well. We want the school board to not only listen to us, but to process what we are telling you. The Wildwood administration for this school year works. It doesn't need any fixing. Please direct your focus on another area that needs improvement. People, you can put a body into a position, but you're not going to get the same result because those people that I'm speaking of bring a uniqueness to that position. And you can't find it in just anyone. These two people had a winning combination. I trust the school board of education is capable to locate the perfect principal replacement for Hicks. Bring Mr. Furka back to Wildwood in the fall. Keep our winning combination together. I want to say one more thing in closing. We can wish and want things to get better, but the change and the progress rests on the seven board members that we've elected and we trust to do the right thing. And this room and that overflow room showed you how much support the seven of you have. And all you have to do is listen. They have great ideas. They're willing to get their hands dirty. They're willing to help you work and make this get fixed as soon as possible. All you have to do is open your arms to what they have to say and really listen to what they're saying. And I thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Page.
All right, I appreciate the opportunity to address you today on behalf of many parents at Wildwood Elementary. Though I may be unfamiliar to many of you, I fulfill multiple roles within our school district. I serve as a crossing guard at two of our elementary schools. I hold the position of Vice President of our PTO. And most importantly, I am the mother to two remarkable students in our district. Recently, we've witnessed numerous disappointing decisions in our school district, but today I want to focus on one particular issue. The decision to vacate the vice principal position at Wildwood Elementary with just three weeks remaining to our year. During my seven years as a parent at our school, I've directly observed three of the nine different administrative changes that have occurred at our building over the past two decades. Before this year, I witnessed an overwhelming burden placed on our principal, which resulted in what I can only describe as trickle-down chaos within our school. Due to my unique perspective as a parent volunteer, I'm more acutely aware of the issues within our school than most parents. I've seen classrooms evacuated multiple times due to violent student behavior, heard students screaming in the halls disrupting classes, and witnessed children acting out by urinating in the halls, destroying property, and physically assaulting staff and students. Teachers and support staff were completely burnt out having to work in these challenging conditions daily. After many of us voiced these concerns to the district, you finally, finally acknowledged the need for additional support within our school. This led to the introduction of the vice principal position, which was filled by Mr. Matt Furka. The positive impact was almost immediate. While I'm sure that our staff can provide data on improved testing, reduction in ODRs and other educational metrics, I would like to share my perspective as a parent. The building is now a calm, safe place for children to grow and learn. I met with smiles in the morning from students and staff, and there are no longer daily class evacuations. The morale and culture among the staff and students is now exemplary. Most importantly, my child no longer fears going to school. May is Mental Health Month, so I'd like to point out the undue mental burden that removing the support at our school will cause. The first to feel the burden will be our newly promoted principal, who's overseeing five hundred and twenty-five students, sixty-four staff members, and countless community partnerships. This fatigue will erode the morale and burden the staff members, who will be left yet again feeling unsupported and overworked. This stress will compound and ultimately have the greatest impact on our students. While I'm fully aware that the administrative shift looks great on paper, especially for a district facing a financial crisis, I assure you it does not look good in practice.
That's time.
Thank you.
Andrew Reisen.
Didn't have glasses last time. Good evening. My name is Andy Reisen. I've been a math teacher in Wayne Westland for twenty-four years. I've been the department head of Wayne since 2011. My son Devon was on the Zebra State Champ bowling team back in twenty-three. My daughter Abby will be the president of the school, uh, Student Council next year. I'm so proud of you guys. I'm here today to express my concern about the plan to save money by consolidating some of the AP and other classes at Wayne and Glenn. The idea is to combine two smaller AP classes into one. For example, the AP Calc kids at Glenn will come to Wayne and at some point in the day to take calc with the Wayne kids. We also have rockets coming over for computer program and AP government. Wayne students are going to Glenn for AP Bio and choir. My info is here safe, but it looks like we're saving five sections, which is basically one teacher's salary. Here's some potential negative consequences I think we should be aware of. The obvious one, it completely interrupts the day of the educational process for the students involved. Many of them are the hardest working kids in the district. What does that mean? If a student's in one of these classes, they'll spend a portion of their day at their rival school and get on a bus to return to their home school. Still not sure how that's going to work with other five classes since, you know, traveling is a thing and it takes time. The other option would be to pretend that it's any other year in my twenty-four years in Wayne Westland and let the AP classes run at lower numbers, appreciating the fact that these high-level classes depend on discussions and labs and more detailed feedback from their teachers. I've been at Wayne since 2003. At least one section of calc is run every year. Sometimes twenty kids, sometimes seven, sometimes thirty-five. Social emotional learning is the focus of nearly every meeting and email in Wayne Westland. What is this doing for our students' emotional needs? Belonging, safety? Have you seen Wayne Road in the winter? Many of our top students are senators, musicians, athletes, upper bound kids. How does Spirit Week work? What about the pep rallies and class meetings? What about their senior year? Teachers need happiness too. Sometimes that one class of twelve try-hard calc kids makes the other four hours of cell phones and hall passes go by a bit faster. Mr. Gray, you were in that class my very first year teaching. Eighth grade algebra was the most rewarding class I've ever taught, I remember. Please put yourselves in the shoes of a tenth grader in my Algebra II class who just found out that AP Bio is only running at Glenn next year. Her sister had Miss Gusty two years ago and she loved it. Glenn's still trying to find someone to teach it because they haven't run it in a while. What would you do? Option one, take AP Bio, spend your day at Glenn. Spend part of your day at Glenn, hope the bus is dependable and you can stay connected with your friends. Or option two, stay at Wayne all day, take regular Bio. Everybody else is fine chilling. Maybe you'll work it hard next year. Students don't take AP classes for the fun and excitement. They take these classes because they actually want to learn. They want to push themselves. They have dreams of being the best engineer, doctor, teacher they can be. I know the Glenn teachers talked about this last time, but it's so true. These kids choose to take AP classes. Why are we giving them such a good reason not to? And what about the negative PR? I'll let you guys worry about that, but don't forget, these kids have younger siblings and friends who choose to go to Wayne Westland every year. I do not expect my words to make change. I use the same words in March when I met with Ms. Curry and Ms. Pelikovich and Mr. Loomis. My colleague Shannon Pippa shared similar ideas when she met with Dr. Dignan several weeks ago. Change would have already been made. I just want to go back and watch the video because I have a bad feeling this is a turning point for our district. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Reisen. And we are going to have to move on to the next item on the agenda. If you were not able to speak tonight, feel free to email the board and we'll make sure to get your comments to the administration for response. Next item is three thirteen point two four, Review and Approval of Wayne County Regional Education Service Agency Budget Resolution 2024-25.
So moved.
Do I have support? Okay. Any comment? All right, Ms. Hines, take the roll call.
Excuse me, I think you said three thirteen.
Yes, everything was shifted.
Oh, I guess right, thank you.
Yep. All right, Ms. Hines, roll call.
Ms. Abby Mitchell.
The Wayne Risa.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
President Gray.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Ms. Curry, did Dr. Dignan send any remarks? Okay. Dr. Dignan is out ill today, so we don't have any remarks from him. But the next item then is three fifteen point two four, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. I will start with Mr. Neal today.
I have no comments.
Okay, Ms. Abby Mitchell.
Yes. Good evening. I do have comments because I don't have poetry. That was last month. But May is Mental Health Month, and we need to take care of our mental health. Um, I got a few phone calls over the last couple of weeks that was really sad for me. One of them was a mother who said that her child has been bullied all school year. So I say to you, as we think about May being Mental Health Month, let's think about our mental health. Let's not allow our child to be bullied all year because of their hair, their clothes. Wayne Westland, we have a bully policy, a non-tolerance bully policy. I suggested a couple of things to her. One of the things I really suggest to her is for her to reach out to nine eight eight for her child to maybe talk to somebody. So I say this to the young man loud. My students, because my colleague right here, she always say, you say students first. My teachers, my parents, my shareholders, you know, if you're feeling a little blue, it's okay to call somebody and take care of yourself, and I wish you well. And the other, only thing I had was to say thank you to everybody that came. Thank you to all the teachers during Teacher Week. You are greatly appreciated, and that's all I have. Good night.
Thanks, Ms. Abby Mitchell. Ms. May?
Pardon the interruption, but I think you skipped an agenda item. I don't, Michigan High School, I thought it was.
No, that was removed. That was removed. Yep. Yep. Ms. May? I'm sorry.
Is there any possible way I could speak? I'm a senior. My email will be deleted soon. Like, it's my senior year and I've been speaking to you for seven months now, so.
We have moved on to another agenda item.
You have the other one.
However, I, I am willing to stay afterwards and hear anything you have to say. Ms. May?
Okay, thank you. I will stay as well to hear what you have to say. Okay? Um, so for starters, I would just like to say thank you to Asia and Sophia for doing a fantastic job and leading us in the pledge this evening. Also, congratulations to all of our Legacy Project winners. The other piece, um, and it's funny that Chase spoke to this about students first because this has been really, um, heavy on me is the fact that as we sit through these, uh, board meetings, we're not having conversations around students. We're having conversations around budgets. We're having conversations around transparency, but we're not talking about students. We're not talking about what they need. We're not talking about, um, mental health. We're not talking about academics. We're just not talking about students. And that is, um, very concerning for me. The, um, so I just, I want to lift that because Chase lifted it and I was like, wow, that's been on my mind. Confirmation. The other piece is during our, it wasn't April, so it had to be our March meeting. I asked about a presentation, um, of our data by demographics that was supposed to take place this month, is what administration said, and that didn't take place. I know we had a litany of presentations, but that was a question that I had. That was a concern that I had based on a presentation that was presented of NWEA data. So I want to lift that again as a recommendation because as we continue to talk about what our needs are, we need to be looking at our data as well, so. And with that being said, because we won't have our seniors here again, I just want to say congratulations to the seniors and just, um, super, super, super proud of you all. Know how hard you had to work to get here, the obstacles that you have had, you've had to encounter and overcome, and just super proud. So enjoy these last two point five days is what I believe was shared. Because you don't get them back. And wishing you the best of luck in your next endeavors, whatever that may be. So that's it for me. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Again, Mr. Walsh, your presentation was amazing. I definitely would like to talk to you to get like a little more clarity of some things. So thank you so much for just bringing that to our attention. Um, I was blessed to be able to go see the, uh, Fire Academy, the William D. Ford Technical Center, uh, with the retraction. That was amazing. I tried to, as much as I can, promote the positive things in Wayne Westland, like on my Facebook page, like I was able to show, like, because I've got a lot of connections in the community with the fire chiefs and tell them, hey, you know, hire our kids. They're coming out certified, you know, with the police department. Definitely would like to, you know, get some relation with the sheriff's department to get our kids some jobs. Um, I was able to tour the Career Tech Center, the new home that they built. It was amazing. Um, it's going for two hundred and sixty thousand. Last year when they had the house, it went for two hundred and thirty-five thousand, sold in two weeks. So these kids do an amazing job, like in the community. It's super awesome. And I've been posting like, you know, Wayne Westland, like, yeah. So that's why I want this stuff to hurry up and finish because we got to get the good news out. We will lose more kids if this negative stuff keeps happening. I want to just really push on a positive marketing because we're going to lose so many kids. This, this, this district is going downhill. Like I said, I've been here ten years and this is the worst I've ever seen it. And it's really hurting my soul. It hurts the kids. I mean, I just, it's, it's very hard to see a way out of it. I'm being totally honest. I try to be a cheerleader, but it's very difficult. And eventually, we're going to have to come to some type of, you know, impound to like fix this problem. Because we're going to be losing so, we've lost so many amazing staff members. Like, it's just heartbreaking. And then, and then even when it comes to some of our kids and they're talking about the music programs, that's important. Like in the beginning, like, um, I was able to go to the concert at Wayne Memorial and the one for Glenn. And Wayne was phenomenal, but you have to start a base. You have to start on elementary, junior high to get those musicians up to par. So it's very important to get those together. And even too with, you know, transfers. I mean, a lot of people get upset about it, but it's like, people want to be at work and be happy. People don't want to be miserable. You know, I'm always for employees because I've been through terrible employment situations. So I know what it's like to just be treated unfairly. So I'm always looking, like I said, on the best part of the staff, the students, because the kids, it's important. Like, you know, I went to David Hicks, uh, Franklin, Wayne Memorial, and I want our kids to experience the same experience I have with upper bound, being able to travel, you know, taking these different classes in AP. Those are very important with these kids going to college. We don't want to lose our best students to other school districts because we don't have it together. So we got to get it together soon. We had a legislative breakfast this morning, you know, that went really good. We had Senator Dana Pecheke here, um, our new state representative, um, Peter Hertzberg, and then we had Dylan Wiegala, who were telling some of our initiatives, things that we need, you know. And I say we need more funding from Lansing. I told them the importance. We need help now, now. We cannot wait. You know, we need as much funding as we can get while we have it because I just don't want this school district to go any lower than it has. You know, we, we got to make up those additional fundings. And I brought back again the Wayne Westland language that we had some years ago. A lot of stuff you can fix in Lansing. They can write laws and approve things to help us out because we're not the only school district that's going through. Ann Arbor's going through another district star too, but we want to catch it before it goes too far. Um, I'm excited about the graduations that's coming up. That's my favorite time of year because as a school board member, our jobs are to make sure our kids are educated and make sure they're ready for society, you know, to be global citizens, to be helpful, to, you know, have good careers. Um, I'm really big on skill trades and workforce development. That's why I really, you know, definitely enjoyed those programs at our career center. And I wish that I could do more tours to show people in the community what we offer in Wayne Westland. Like, the, the facilities are beautiful. You know, we did the bonds, like these kids at Culinary Arts, just amazing. And when I went to see the band concert, I felt like I was at the orchestra hall. It was just phenomenal. Phenomenal. And then when we went to Ford Field to see the kids out marching, I mean, it was like, I'm getting chills just thinking about how amazing it is to see our kids at Ford Field marching band, you know, doing their thing out there, to see our kids at Ford Field marching band, you know, doing their thing out there, building houses, saving lives, you know, with the fire department, you know, the relationships. So, you know, I'm definitely trying to be the cheerleader, but it is very difficult, very difficult. But, you know, again, you know, we have to make sure we have a safe summer. But again, we just have to get back to the basics, get back to educating these kids and, you know, treating our staff